Welcome to the North Bend City Council Work Session for October 13th. During the council chambers, call the meeting director and ask our senior reporter to help us with the call.
Counselor Jones here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Grubman.
Here.
Mayor Eagle Pete.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Counselor Forrest.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is public comment. Do we have any public comments evening?
We do not.
Okay, well, we always look forward to hearing people who want to participate, but we'll go ahead and if you don't have any, move right on to item four, which is our agenda item four, our South Coast Development Council report from Lexie Woodward. Hello, good to see you here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Mayor, City Council and City Administrator. All right, so you can go ahead and go to the next slide. My name is Lexie Woodward. I'm the Executive Director of the South Coast Development Council. This is the second time I've had the opportunity to present to you. I did it last year as well. We have nineteen Board of Directors and we are headquartered in Coos Bay and serve Coastal Lane, Douglas, and all of Coos and Curry Counties. We basically act as an extension to the City of North Bend Economic Development Team as appropriate. We just celebrated our twenty-fifth anniversary this year. The City of North Bend was awarded because y'all committed twenty-five thousand for three years back in twenty-two thousand so that SCDC could get started. So you were one of ten awardees to receive our Founder's Award on that event. When we were founded in year two thousand, we initially focused on traded sector business recruitment in the Coos Bay, North Bend area. But recognizing the need for a more comprehensive approach, we expanded to include business retention and expansion services and have a larger regional footprint. And now we unite the twelve incorporated cities and four county region. We engage public and private stakeholders across the region to pursue economic development opportunities while providing complementary technical assistance to retain, expand, and attract companies and industries that provide living wage jobs in and to our territory. We provide a public benefit funded by annual memberships, such as y'all, as well as private foundation state and federal grants, with the understanding that funding is meant to create the largest collective economic impact and is not exclusive to those who fund our activities. Next slide. Your City Administrator, David Moyer, is on our Executive Committee. He was our past Chair. And then listed at the top, those are our top members, and that includes the City of North Bend. You fund your membership of ten thousand dollars through your URA. And then those are our forty-nine members that we have right now. If anybody's listening, I'd really like to get one so I can say we have fifty. Everybody in green are companies that either reside in North Bend or serve North Bend. Next slide, please. This is our team. Courtney Helstead is our Operations Manager. Tanya Rosley is our Entrepreneurship Program Manager, and Lamar Hoy is our Economic Development Manager. And he took my place serving on the North Bend Main Street Economic Vitality Committee. Next slide. So these are our three buckets of services. We do business attraction and recruitment. Some examples for City of North Bend so far this year were multiple sites submitted, North Bend sites submitted for state RFPs. So basically what happens is the state of Oregon gets approached by companies looking to relocate or expand in our area, and they send the request for information to economic development organizations such as us. We add the sites onto a software program called Oregon Prospector, and then we submit those sites. That's all done electronically now. It used to do via mail or email or PowerPoint, but now it's all done through a system called Oregon Prospector. So we submitted North Bend sites for three different RFIs. One was a headquarters and two were manufacturing projects. They were called Project Build It, Project Save, and Project America. We also sent out an email campaign to over one hundred brokers that we've compiled and embedded, and that included North Bend sites, of course. And then we've added all-for-sale North Bend whole and Main Street sites onto Oregon Prospector and linked to those sites from our website. And then we've worked on other prospects looking to expand or be retained within the City of North Bend. A couple other examples for relocation and expansion. Master Blaster of Coos Bay, I know it says of Coos Bay, but they are looking to expand outside of Coos Bay. And then a couple other names of people that we've helped, either that are interested in moving into North Bend, expanding in North Bend, or anything like that. Next slide. On our website, we have custom tools that are available to all businesses in the South Coast Development Council Region. So on the left, that is our property listing database that I mentioned. So here you can see the airport opportunity. So we are the ones who get all that information and put it onto this website. And this is how we submit sites to those state leads, but it's also just on our website because we don't depend on the brokers to market these sites, these major sites. We make sure and market ourselves. And we have a curated list of investors, developers, brokers, and site selectors that we create email marketing campaigns for in email. And then on the right is our interactive map. So anybody looking to move into the City of Coos Bay, they can put in whatever address of the building that they're looking to move into. So just for an example, I put in this building. And then these different colors on the map represent different layers. So there are utility layers, various incentive layers, school district layers, what city, county you're in, as well as points of interest such as colleges, state trails and parks, and many more. So like I said, anybody interested in developing in North Bend can use this tool. And it will tell them, for example, what exact utility service the building. Next slide. So the next three slides are all about entrepreneurship. SCDC leaned into entrepreneurship in a really big way the last two years. North Bend has been there from the very beginning. You guys' commitment supported the creation of the South Coast Accelerator, which is our marketing name for our business incubator located at the Newmark Building on Swat's campus. This is a hub for startups in tech, clean energy, manufacturing, and blue economy. Those are the targets for those tenants, but we'll accept everybody besides for retailers because we're not allowed to do retail in that building per Swat rules. And then North Bend entrepreneurs have engaged in every single SCDC entrepreneurship program. We do co-starters business training. We have a co-starters bootcamp, which is two days, and we have a co-starters three hours per week for six weeks, which takes entrepreneurs from idea to launch. Our Morning Bright Mastermind is an opportunity for entrepreneurs to get together once a month in Coos County and bounce ideas off each other, say what's keeping them up at night, what they're excited about. It's just a peer networking group specifically only for entrepreneurs. And then our entrepreneurship manager does one-on-one advising as well. Local businesses in North Bend have grown, hired, and strengthened the community through these programs. And North Bend is a core partner in our Southwest Oregon Innovation Hub. So that is something that was launched last year. There are eight innovation hubs throughout the state. SCDC applied for the opportunity to become the Hub Manager for the Coos, Curry, and Douglas area. And like I said, the City of North Bend is an official partner of that and basically a one-stop shop for entrepreneurs in the three county region. So we have a pitch night in Coos County, Curry Night, excuse me, Coos County, Curry County, and then we do Morning Bright Mastermind in all three counties. And of course, advising for anybody in those counties, and then co-starters, we rotate around all their counties as well. Next slide. So in our business incubator, as we speak now, there are nine tenants for a hundred percent full with a waiting list. Eight of the tenants serve North Bend residents. Four of our Coos County Pitch Night businesses serve North Bend residents. Three of four Curry County Pitch Night pitchers serve or ship to North Bend. Five to eight North Bend entrepreneurs attend the Morning Bright Mastermind session each month. And three North Bend businesses have been advised through one-on-one mentorship. And we've graduated six North Benders from our co-starters group. Six of ten total participants have signed up for our October Co-Starters Core Program, which is currently in its second week as we speak. Next slide. We're in conversation with the local North Bend business to host the next Coos County Pitch Night. That'll be in January, and then we continue to serve more North Bend businesses and entrepreneurs through those programs I've already mentioned. And there's just some pictures from all of our events. Next slide. That's what I thought. Y'all, do you have any questions for me or comments?
Counselor Jones, what is a blue economy?
Anything that has to do with the water. Yeah.
Do you have a date for the pitch night?
I feel like it might be January seventeenth, but I can let y'all know.
Yeah.
But we're really.
What are some of the challenges with supporting the entrepreneurs?
Continuing to get continued funding. Yeah, that's the, that's really the only challenge, and we could do a lot more if we had more funding. So of the hubs, we received the lowest amount of funding compared to every single other hub in the entire state, and that holds us back from what we could be doing. So funding is the.
What's the goal for that, with population?
I would assume so. Yeah, they want that money to serve as many people as possible, and we simply have less people.
Individuals can be individual support.
Absolutely.
Say that, but.
Absolutely.
It's not just companies that can support, like you can be an individual resident. This is high level economic development and support really any level, right?
Yeah, and you can tailor it to what you want to support. I only want this to go towards entrepreneurship. For example, we have a trust from somebody that can only be spent on entrepreneurship in Curry County. That trust is gonna really be able, make us to be able to elevate entrepreneurship in Curry County. We're gonna have more money in that county compared to the other two counties simply because of this trust.
What do you plan on having any reporting around? People who go through the entrepreneur programs, start their business, and how long they last?
Yeah. Yeah, we have not hit that point yet. We haven't, yeah, but we, oh yes, we will track everything. Yeah, we need to for the funders, for justification, for strategic plan metrics, just for a variety of reasons. We're tracking everything. Now, some tenants are people we help, you know, they don't necessarily want to share their sales with us, and so even if it's anonymized data. So sometimes, you know, we're working through, what are, what are you willing to share with us so we can continue to justify these programs? But not make them feel like they're handing over information they're not comfortable handing over.
Great update. Down from the agenda, the number five is our Main Street update. Stephanie Wilson, our Community Development Manager.
Hello. Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to just take a brief moment of your time tonight, give you a quick update. I just returned from the Oregon Main Street Conference. This conference is a biannual event, and this year it was held in Albany, Oregon. And we had three of our program members attend. We had our President, Tara Moore, and our Vice President Barb Dunham, and myself attend. So as you can see here, each conference has a theme, and it was dedicated to the long game. Just gonna kind of go through. Nope, maybe. Next slide. Oh, okay, there we go. So first I wanted to kind of discuss the representation that North Bend had during the conference. We were fortunate enough to be asked to speak on two different panels. Here on the bottom left, here on the bottom left, I was one of the panelists on Creative Ways to Increase Engagement in Your Community. So I am with Beaverton Downtown Association and Gold Beach Main Street. And that was a really great way to share some of the activities that we have accomplished, such as the Wayfinder Sign and the Community Art Walk. Over here on the far right, you can see I conducted a little experiment with everyone prior to my panel where I asked individuals to sign my jacket. This is a sneak peek to our upcoming Community Art Walk in April, where we will have the art step portion, which is the North Bend High School. Art students actually paint clothing, and we'll be hosting a fashion show during the event. So I used it as an engagement way and went a little bit deeper into that during the panel. Up here on the top, we have Barb Dunham. She was asked to speak on the closing panel, which kind of did an overview of each community's process and their program, some beginning thoughts of when they first started and what they're currently doing. So Curry Gill here on the left asked the panel different questions. Right down here, I always like to shout out to all the South Coast representation. We have our President Tara Moore, Vice President Barb Dunham. We have Beth from Banden, Har from Coos Bay, Lori from Gold Beach, and we're missing Rosa from Reed's Port. But that is our South Coast programs that are working on Main Street program in their communities.
Stephanie, before you.
Yes.
Slide, I just want to point out, when you look at the slide, how recognizable the North Bend Main Street logo is right in the middle with the bridge and everything. Think that that is, you should be really proud of that because where you see it with the bridge and the different buildings there. People know that that's North Bend, by the way, so nice job.
Thank you. It is definitely stand out. And I don't have it in the slide here, but Kathy, a representative from National Main Street, was there hosting a panel. And I'm not exactly sure why, but she picked our logo to throw on one of her random slides. Wasn't relevant to what she was speaking on, but she must have liked our logo, and it was there. That was a nice surprise. And then right down here, Sherry Stewart has been involved in Oregon Main Street, or in Main Street for thirty years, Oregon Main Street specific for fifteen years. And she has announced her retirement and will be leaving the program in February. There was a kind of impromptu tribute to her on Wednesday night opening session, and I was one of seven that was asked to speak on her behalf. So I felt very honored, and so I thought I'd throw a picture in there of Sherry. She's been very instrumental in our program. So next slide. If you have not seen yet, we are super thrilled to announce that there are eleven excellent Main Award categories. And earlier this year, we went through a anonymous voting process through our board where they all put in what they thought we should nominate. And we, we put forward applications for multiple projects, and we were awarded three. And so very proud of our community, our program. We won Outstanding Promotional Event, so that was for our Community Art Walk. Tara Moore and her husband, they tied for Business of the Year. There was another business that was actually in Albany that they tied with. And then one of six standout volunteers was Barb Dunham. So just wanted to share that with you if you have not heard yet. Very exciting. And then before we skip to the next slide, I've been working on something, and we've been keeping it very hush-hush. But we were actually, the three of us were welcomed back on the stage at the end of the conference to share some news with all of the. Go ahead, next slide. We have been asked to host the two thousand twenty-seven Oregon Main Street Conference here in North Bend. So we feel very honored, very thrilled, glad that the state sees the work that we've been doing and accomplishing. We still have a lot of work to do in two years. But we wanted to share that with you first before we put it out in the universe. So that is a nice little bow on our experience in the conference, and we want to share it with you. So I'm happy to ask any, answer any questions or any thoughts.
What was your biggest takeaway in the whole conference?
You know, this year was really great. This is my third conference that I've attended. They usually do it biannually, but because of COVID, they skipped a year. So even though I've only been here three and a half years, I've gone to three now. What they do is they break out into three sessions. And so with having three of us attend, we divide and conquer. So we each went to a session. And so what we're working on is putting an overview for our board and whoever else wants to see it for what we retained. But probably reassurance on a lot of things we're doing great, but then also a lot of. It's a lot, it's an unsure world right now. So just, I think it is really encouraging partnerships and what you can do, divide and conquer, because things are uneasy right now. So the more people you can get on your plate to accomplish your goals is probably the best. There's a lot of engagement and connecting work sessions that happen during the conference.
Are any of the Main Street programs tied to federal dollars?
I can't speak for the individual programs, but no, they are all collectively have their own funding for how they operate their program, but most of them are not federal.
Is the Florida Main Street program.
It comes from, it comes from the state, yeah, from the state level. Yeah.
So this is, even though it's a national kind of thing, federal dollars aren't part of that.
Right. So explain that there's the national federal and then the state, or each state has their own program.
Right, so there is a national Main Street, and then each state works its own program. And so for instance, and we get like the revitalization dollars that we've gotten in the past, those come from state funding and not federal funding. And then each program for their staffing or any programs they're doing, they have their own different avenues of getting those dollars, whether they're membership-based or from their cities or from TLT. It's all unique to each program at the local level.
Do you know how long they've been doing the Main Street Conference? You've gone to three. Have they been doing it for?
Oh.
Like thirty years?
They've been doing, I would, I think around, I mean, for a long time. I don't know the exact answer on that. I would, I would think quite a while.
And then I was like, has North Bend ever hosted it?
No, North Bend's never hosted. I believe it was held in Coos Bay about close to fifteen years ago, but North Bend's never hosted the conference. No, thank you.
Did you expect that, the opportunity inviting to, I mean, invite us to?
So we have asked, so each year there's a quarterly meeting. There's, there's usually a Zoom in the first quarter, and then there's two in-person. And the third one's either the conference or a deep dive workshop. And so we had shown interest in hosting a possible network comp, network meeting. But I guess that they just decided to go all out and do the conference instead. So, yeah, I mean, there's definitely a long list of checklists that you have to meet to host a conference or a network meeting. And so, of course, we've gone through all this process. We've secured our locations. And capacity-wise, we've met their expectations to be able to host the conference.
Stephanie, you'll explain what the significance of this conference and the fact that it is a North Bend conference, and who we've lined up for some reason.
Sure. So the conference, you have to be able to host up to three hundred people. They usually have between two and three hundred people attend the conference. And there's over a hundred and ten Main Street programs that are across the state. So most, all the programs attend the conference. There are people on tours that attend the conference, people with on-preference that attend the conference, other boarding organizations, like Energy Trust of Oregon was at the conference recently. And so in order to host it, all activities have to be in the Main Street District, of course. And so Liberty Theater was our key partner in this because they're the only place really downtown that can host up to three hundred people. So I did a, I did go meet with their, with their executive committee, and I presented to them, and they agreed that, yes, they would help be the, the host location. And then we'll have breakout locations as well. So we're looking. Yes, a hundred percent. And, and the downtown corridor, yeah, for the Main Street Conference. So we're looking at other avenues of locations such as Wildflower and the library for the breakout sessions. Because they each, they have three breakout sessions and then the host location, and then they'll do a mixer as well. So there's a lot of really great economic vitality that's gonna come to our downtown for this. And then we have to put together a parking map and eatery map and all those good things, extended experience. So we will put together extended experience for the conference. It happens to fall on the same week that we host our sip and stroll. So we'll do that, and then we'll talk to the History Museum on doing some tours there and ice skating rink. So October, if I remember right, seventh, eighth, and ninth, I believe, it's that second week in October twenty twenty-seven. Yeah, so Wednesday night's the opening night. They'll have a full day conference Thursday and then a half day on Friday. But as we start to meet with them and put the programming together, we'll keep you in the loop for sure. They'll do some onsite visits as well. So, yeah.
One more question on the conference, you mentioned, you were saying about funding earlier. If money grew on trees, which is all of our bushes, what is, what is something that you saw, you're like, oh, we have the money, I would totally do this?
Probably revitalization in our buildings downtown.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Cleanliness, historic preservation, facade grants, and avenues in which we can slow traffic down and increase foot traffic would probably be, if I had to pick one, that would be it. We, Northern Main Street, I'm really proud of our team, and the support from the city has been instrumental in this, of course, and all of our partners and our volunteers. I feel we do a really great job of doing community engagement, the events, and all those good things, but probably the physical tangible things. If money grew on trees, yeah. Great, thank you.
It's like, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is number six. That's reviewing the snake council agenda for fourteen. It's like, one of the first things we get to do tomorrow is congratulate our city manager on his five years of service. Do you believe it's been five years already? He says, yes, I can. Do you want to go ahead and walk us through the rest of the things on the agenda for tomorrow?
Yes, 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 yes.
I know you just rolled in off of vacation.
Whilst I chuckled for my London visit, the department heads are supposed to put forth, it's going to be recognized on the thing. So, but our, that keeps the administrator took that warning. So we have, we'll have Sergeant Holt here from our Police Department. He's already met his ten years. But we've had to delay, so it'll be out there. We have two propositions. One will be domestic violence awareness. We do this once a year. Safe project, and then we have the Filipino American History Month proclamation that will be presented by the mayor as well. Another consent calendar, we only have one item. This is a letter of support for the VLCD Community Green Infrastructure Grant Program. And so they specifically asked that the council was on board with us seeking grant dollars. And if you have any questions, let me know in the Aladar. I'll move on. If anyone disagrees, we can take it off, and you can do a separate vote or vote. That's right, it's the only one against that Aladar. So. Already. Exactly. Great money for green infrastructure.
And this is specifically for the plaza, yeah?
Move on to public comment, and then you have a public hearing. This is ordinance vacating in portion of right of ways, contains a thing. Two standing dedication D ninety-one dash one dash zero six, four six, otherwise known as Forty Point Road. And we have our Public Works Director here. If you have any questions, you can go through and explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. And that public hearing then gets followed by an ordinance. So would you like to hear from your Public Works Director?
We moved it to this place, so we can look. And do you have any other more questions? For any additional questions? Uh so I just wanted to walk through, so we're, we're, I don't know what the words are, we're eating, over or whatever. The part of, when we learned of it, is that the little, the property behind areas, that, or you know, the restaurant there?
It's passed there, um basically what we are vacating, because it's a dedication, we're vacating, which means we're vacating our rights. We're extinguishing our rights of public access to that is all behind the airport's gate at this point.
But that's, that's where it starts.
Well, Mary, it's, it's kind of funny because it's Marion Street up to and just past the airport's gate. And then Pony Point Road is dedicated beyond there um and our mayor at the time, Mr. Slater, signed the dedication. Because we own both the airport and the, uh the city owned airport at that time. But the airport's the only owner except for Marano and Lewis. Along the dedication, we extended the dedic-, I mean, we didn't vacate a hundred percent of what was originally fake or dedicated. Because there's actually a triangular piece which accesses Marano's property. And I contacted Jeff Marano to tell him about this, because he would be the only one really affected. Uh we had a brief discussion, he was fine with it, because we vacated it beyond, actually it says it, the north property line is the. So everything beyond there's the airport, even though his actual access is behind the airport gate right now, but not by much, but.
And we, we, we weren't doing, we weren't being taken.
Well, after nine one one happened, they closed it, we had a boat ramp out there, campground, yeah.
Walking area, road area was, was a good piece, but after that, and managed by the uh port at that time.
Yeah.
When it was actually closed, yes, um the city had significant investment out there, but. And rightly so, security wise, FAA wouldn't allow use of it anymore, so and the, in any reasonable history, looking forward, I don't see it being opened again. It could always be questioned again, but I just don't see it in our, frankly, in our lifetimes unless something radically changes.
Yeah, I hope we're see that, I, I, I think it's a very pleasant memory, because of us that used it, but obviously this is, this ought to be the next thing.
Right, cool, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
Um there will be a script with public hearing and then of course, uh ordinance and so. Moving on, uh number eight, there'll be a public hearings, resolution thirty three seventy four. This is the consideration, the annual consideration of rate increase for open sanitation. And we have with us um Mark Fullwiler with district manager, who would like to actually formally introduce himself. Uh he's new to the area, um we've been collectively working with him. And so Mark, if you want to come on up, you uh can present to the council. We've explained to Mark that tomorrow you will conduct your public hearing and then based on that, you'll go into your resolution. But this is also an opportunity for them to present to the council um for justification of the, the increase. Mark, if you'd like to go on.
Good evening, thank you, mayor and councillors. Now, first off, I just want to introduce myself. Uh my name is Mark Fullwiler, I've been in the waste industry for ten years, uh all with waste connections. I started in Florence uh two thousand sixteen and they quickly moved me to Idaho. Kind of built up businesses over there for the last eight and a half years. Uh then the opportunity came up here with a lot of leadership changes. I know most of you, if not all of you, know who Bill Richardson is and Bill was one of my mentors, uh being on the coast over here back then. So it was a, uh, it was a privilege to come back and, and move back into the area and, and take on this uh challenge. A lot going on with North Bend Sanitary, Lessin Sanitary, uh all of the different company names that we've acquired over the years. I hope to consolidate that into one name eventually, but a lot of things uh have to come first. Uh one is a new transfer station, new office and new shop that we're breaking in ground on next year. Uh I plan to uh work with Mr. Milliron and come back and present that to you and, and uh talk about what the future uh looks like a little bit more. Uh unfortunately, the first time I get to come and talk to you is about a budgeted increase that happened prior to me coming here. Uh but I'm here uh asking for an annual increase of three point two percent. Um I feel it's justified that it's, sticks within the consumer price index, which I'd like to talk about more if, if you would like. Um typically, when I, I talk about consumer price index and, and uh having a few conversations with, with the city staff. Um I like to, to look at it a little bit uh more specific in the garbage, garbage and trash index. Uh it takes away some of the things that are involved in the consumer price index, such as clothing, for instance, has nothing to do with our industry. You know, uh our industry is about fuel, steel prices, uh the amount of commodities that we're able to collect and recycling and, and uh. You know, over the last ten years, just of my existence in the industry, the cost of getting rid of those things has, has risen exponentially. Our operating costs year over year have risen just above ten percent. So what used to cost us a hundred dollars to, to new costs us a hundred and ten dollars. That's uh pretty much, you know, I didn't come with a fancy uh presentation, but uh it, it's, it really is what it is. The, the inflation cost or, or the cost of doing business and maintaining uh what we do, which I believe uh historically has been pretty efficient and pretty safe uh in your city. We want to continue that. I have three new trucks uh that we'll be putting into the budget over the next few weeks. I'm in, involved in our annual budgets uh coming up. Um but more importantly, it's just the retention of our employees. Uh when I look at uh this area and, and what we do, uh you have a law, a lot of long-term employees. And that's really what the key to our business is, is having the same drivers and the same trucks in these neighborhoods. Uh and at these businesses uh in the middle of the night, uh when it's raining and dark, uh that familiarity makes it a safer place to be here in North Bend. Um and to maintain that, we have to uh budget uh annual increases for those employees as well, so they can take care of themselves and their families in this community. So that's why I'm here this evening, uh to answer any questions or help justify it a little bit further.
You know, and well, sure, in a variety way, uh excellent partnership for decades. So we expect.
We plan to do more, just so you know, a lot of uh good ideas just coming from the first couple of presenters that we would, you know. Yeah, want to continue that.
Thank you. And you just finished the brush pickup, was that just recently?
That's correct.
Thank you for doing that. I always, people are always very happy that twice a year it comes around.
Yeah, I think uh once the year kind of ends and we get into twenty twenty six, like I said, I'd love to come back and present not only what we're doing uh at the transfer station and doing all this. But there's a lot of recycling material, you know, things that are going on in the recycling world. There was the R M A that was passed, that's basically going to put curbside recycling in everyone's house. Um what that looks like and how that timeline plays out, there's a lot of variables to that. But I want to keep you guys up, up to speed on, on, on that. Uh we've even mentioned talking about handling brush and yard debris in different ways here. So a lot of exciting things on the horizon, my plans to take this to the next level and, and keep serving the city the best we can.
Yeah, it can be really interesting to hear about how we take what we collect and what happens to it, especially if you're able to do something.
Uh I would love to talk about everything from cardboard to glass to anything you guys want to talk about.
Yes, yes, all right. Well, thank you. It's nice to just meet you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Right, and the council um uh will be uh working on a complete overhaul, resurfacing and bringing for um. Coming by, a new franchise agreement, uh ours is extremely old. And we both agree that it's time to uh get it into twenty first century. Um and I'm finalizing and finishing up um currently Pacific towers and said that would be first in line before we get to uh this one. But um uh and then most recently, we did a change on a zip fiber with their oppositions there. This one is in the queue uh to uh get moving forward, so. All right, so as I mentioned. Yeah, just one, um. A- a- asking, uh, we all know how they work for us, what goes on, uh what request is, uh seems reasonable to me. Uh the only question I had was in the resolution, we don't say anything about three point two percent, if that's what we end up with, which is simply said reason. Rate increase affected blah, blah, blah. As shown in the re-, oh, it's exhibit A where all that comes out. Okay, good, because it, I've been sort of said, didn't really tell me that, yeah, okay. Historically, we've done the uh C P I. Yes, okay, good, all right. All right, um moving forth, uh number, uh they get you to number ten. This is authorization of three-year control of the open text carbonite for city data backup services. And we love giving Josh public speaking uh opportunities that will bring us the wealth enough from our most technology. And let him explain what we're backing up, why and what our apartments are from the state.
Hello, so this agreement uh is for the next three years uh with open text slash carbonite. Um so basically what it is, is we have an onsite server that backs up everything uh on our police domain and our city domain. And then we also back up to the cloud. And what it does is it does uh thirty days worth of backups, so it's not just one snapshot, it's thirty days of data. So if somebody says, hey, I deleted something ten days ago, I can go back and find it. Um if we're ever, heaven forbid, the victim of some kind of ransomware attack or hacking, this really protects our data um and our, our server configurations. Um and that's basically it, it's, it's pretty straightforward, just, just protecting our data. Sixteen thousand dollars a year, forty eight thousand dollars for three years, so questions about that?
Those just the data back.
Yes, yeah.
Uh how's it, I mean, for a layperson, how does it um help us, help protect us from ransomware?
So essentially what happens is somebody opens an email they shouldn't have and then they click on a link. And then we get infected by um, you know, nefarious software. And basically, it's going to then try to infiltrate our network and then once it gets there, it's all in theory. Um it's then going to encrypt our data. So somebody or everybody would get a message then that says, hello, you've been taken over by blah, 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 please contact, you know, such and such. It's actually really, yeah, there's actually a huge industry in Russia for that, where they actually are structured like a lot of uh I T companies. It's really fascinating and scary. Yeah, so it's, it saves a lot of major, major headaches, so it's definitely worth having.
Did he, did we have a agreement with them three years ago, like this is the same company?
Yeah, yeah, it's just an exception that.
Thank you.
Now we present to you number eleven, this is our approval of our Microsoft three sixty five licensing agreement.
So this covers um our emails and then it covers uh office software as well with a few key features. Um before we had Microsoft uh online exchange, which is what all our uh email licensing was. Um I think that cost us roughly twelve thousand dollars a year. So it's definitely a, a bit of a bump, but we're going to get more than just email, we're going to get up to date uh office software. Um we're going to get mobile device management for the, the cops, so for their, their tablets and their phones. Um we're going to get something called intra ID, which is going to be very useful. Uh what we can do with that is we can block uh attempted sign-ins from all over the world. We can just make it so it's just an organ, you know, and kind of keep track of who's going where, very useful. By doing this in a yearly agreement, we're, we're going to save about twenty five percent on the cost. The only caveat to that is we can't cancel any of these licenses in that year, we can only add to it. So it's a little bit different than what our previous agreement was, was just a exchange online. Um and that's pretty much it.
So this, so it's also switched to.
Right, so it's a little confusing, um the government tenant is basically, that's where our data is going to live. It's in a, a government facility or Microsoft owned, but it's designed for, for government uh entities. And before we run the commercial tenant. And so that was a little bit cheaper, but this is actually more in compliance uh with stuff for the police officers.
Yeah.
And it just, it just makes more sense for us to be on the, the government side, yeah, yeah, so. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, um it is our current uh code allows folks to perform work between the hour of seven and six P M. When they decide that they want to work outside those hours, they actually have to uh make a request. And by current code, the city council approves those. So in this instance, the West Coast contractors uh has a contract uh at the airport and they need to operate outside those hours. Um this is uh for work on the northeast corner, runway number twenty three. And they want to be able to perform work between October twentieth and complete it by February eighty ninth. That can't be right, uh December, is that twenty sixth, they're moving into twenty sixth, that's twenty five. Well, they didn't want a work period established by the state, it's October fifteenth through February fifteenth. I think it's supposed to be February twenty sixth. Yeah, I think it's supposed to be twenty sixth, so they have to type out. And so um and they're going to be driving, driving tightly, which of course is noisy. However, um they can't do that when commercial aviation is operating right away, so they have to do it outside of the hours. So uh yes, you can deny the request, but you also shut down the airport. Uh so I don't know which is easier, uh so the request is before you, our public works directors here. We're glad to answer any questions um beyond that. Uh but as you can imagine, there's no quiet way to drive highly.
So two questions though, well, we do have to tell you who's.
Who cannot speak.
So does he?
After this because of the employment. Well, there's a request from his company and so I don't know that.
That was my first question, is, does he have to repeat himself, discussion?
He's not personally benefiting, but the city is certainly.
Uh Mark, did you want to make a comment on this?
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know what councillor Hamilton's specific role is here and uh if there's any way that you could potentially benefit financially. The easy way is to just declare a potential conflict of interest that you work for the company. And, and then, and then you're free to discuss and debate and vote on this if you have a potential conflict. If you have an actual conflict, like you would benefit financially, then you need to declare an actual conflict and then not discuss anything.
What's, you're an employee and you know, business for that organization allows you to continue employment. Does that count as an actual conflict of interest? I mean, that is at the heart of this.
Yeah, so again, without all of the facts, it's, it's really hard to, to assess, but I mean, are you going to get a, you know, a, a pay raise next year? Because this, this, this project went through at night. I mean, I don't know, there's all sorts of weird hypotheticals that, that can come up.
I won't even have any part of this project as far as doing any work out there.
Yeah. So would he need to make a, a, a statement before we continue this discussion?
Y- y- yeah, again, to be, to be on the very conservative side, you could just declare a potential conflict because you do work for the company, but you're not going to benefit financially. Then you've kind of done a C Y A for yourself and you can still discuss and debate this.
Okay, lean into the light and say you got. Well, so I think what you're saying though, is if you make a statement that says, I will declare a potential conflict. That's position, and you make that statement now, then you can be part of the discussion, that's what I'm here to say. So lean in and say, thanks.
Say, I have.
A potential.
A potential conflict of interest.
Because.
Because you work for the company that's doing the requesting the night work.
Great, this this rule did not cover it.
That 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 should cover his de- uh declaring of a potential conflict, yes.
Now, side on the closed caption. Second question was, um, with the work. I hear just coming in and out of here till ten o'clock at night. So what hours are you proposing?
Well, our ordinance limits specifically construction activities from seven A M till six P M. It doesn't limit. Uh, private jets or even commercial aircraft under our current ordinance. A couple of issues council maybe want to aware of. I mean, it's obviously open grounds and sound travels better across open ground. But the nearest dwelling, and most of this noise ordinance is related, I I think it's point eight four miles away. That's actually up on Ash Street above. Uh, the old incubator, the airport incubator. Uh, point nine miles away to Monroe Street from where their work site is. And they're gonna be driving primarily. With vibratory drivers, which is not a. Always like when when you hear him. Using an impact hammer, that's a doing, 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 you can hear for Franklin Miles. That's a vibratory and he was hitting it with it. He was hitting it. Actually, he didn't even have a hammer. He was hitting it with his excavator, driving it with his excavator. Which is like an impact driver. Um, a vibratory hammer is. Relatively quiet. Significantly quieter than an impact hammer. The issue is sometimes you can't, you have to what they call redraw hammer. If the vibratory gets stuck, sometimes they have to get back on it and hit it with an impact hammer to get it deep enough. So there is a potential for some impact hammer. But the majority of this, they'll go in, they're building a coffer dam, which is basically sealing out the water, the protein fill in. Then they'll pull it, they'll dry the pile with a vibratory hammer. Then they'll pull it and I I've had just a brief discussion with Matt, I, but I know this type of construction. Um, they'll fill it all and they'll pull it and they'll have to pull the slopes and then actually not leaving the. Sheet pile in.
And so for everybody, like when the plane went up the runway, you know, F F A came in and did a big audit and went, hey. We don't have enough safety zone around the end of the runway. So the FAA has directed the airport that this work has to be done. Therefore, went up for bid, we got it. So basically we're adding per se to the runway, but not to the white background. It's basically the safety area in the end of the runway.
So the, so the timeline for this is several months, but I imagine that it will not be every night. At one A M, somebody wakes up to. Oh, vibrations, right? So this is a long window with a few days per week perhaps, like it just, just so we give somebody nineteen.
Oh, yeah, for the first couple of weeks, we'll drive our file and all that. That'd be the kind of the noisy part that I have to just be equipment. Uh, you know, doing the do- doing the fill and compacting and all that. And then we'll pull the file.
So the loudest stuff will happen initially. It will be a small part of the total time.
It it won't be louder than hell after taking off the the base, so.
That's good. And that's a big point. Is this something that's important to notify residents? You know, since we can.
Well, it can be put on our website that the uh. This work is taking place. I think it'll actually be quieter. Because of the distance than some of the other things the airport's done, like when we allowed them to pour concrete all night. Um. Which was right within hundreds of feet of residences, not over three quarters of a mile, but there's still. It's something that we can publicize that what it is, it's kind of like the. I don't believe that the sound impact, this is about as far away as you can get from residents in North Bend.
Yeah.
Uh, we've had other projects on highway one oh one on the airport, our own project on Broadway. Um, that I think have more potential uh for this. But honestly, people are always curious, kind of like the cones that are combed off in the middle of one oh one.
So we can authorize, but we can't authorize like the times that they work, correct?
Well, we can allow them to work outside of our stipulated hours and that's the request that's before you. Um. We can put restrictions on it. You can say, and I don't know their work schedule has. Matt has said typically, I don't know how big the coffer dam is, but typically that would take two to three weeks. And that's where your potential for an impact hammer is, um, is driving it, usually pulling it, doesn't. The impact hammer doesn't do well going up. It's a vibe hammer pulling it. Um, but there'll be a lot of trucking and dumping loads of rock, which also makes noise, but um.
There's a lot of equal blocks that are going in this, there are different types of equal block that they're custom, custom made of. And they're making those now. It's, I forget how many, but there's a lot of them.
So. I won't, I can't absolutely promise you, but this is probably less noisy than a lot of other things we've loved. But we can't, we have restricted. For example, when they were working on one oh one, which was a hundred feet away from a residential area. We only allowed them to do pavement breaking, which is fairly noisy up to eleven P M. I don't see that this, um, you know, when it gets quiet at night, I'll be honest. I mean, I live up on a hill. I can hear the seals barking some nights on a calm clear night. That that doesn't mean there's no noise. What it means is. Right, so I mean, and it's in the airport zone, it's like an industrial zone, which actually doesn't have, other than the construction limit. Doesn't have a noise limitation or. Light industrial, commercial and residential districts all have noise limitations, but our industrial zone doesn't. An airport, as everybody has noted, the airport itself, aircraft are not quiet, but.
That was a good point. It's not gonna be louder than in that helicopter taking off. Thank you. Um, and it's worked through the.
And then uh same process tomorrow uh for councillor Hamilton. Um.
Okay, yes, it's morning. You'll also say you'll take that. Um, so I think that was our last.
Uh, there were, excuse me, we're in the middle of the meeting, sir. You can have a seat, there's an opportunity.
Um, sir, I'm gonna have a seat now. Um, there'll be no action, uh, because there is no uh executive session. Uh, it's followed by the administrative report, committee report, uh, council comments. Uh, do not expect any other business tomorrow. And then determine, Mayor Amanda takes you back to your work session agenda.
Okay, looking at the work segment and agenda, if you have anything else.